One nation, under God, indivisible, with thy regime and justice for all.
Reverend Turner?
Mayor and City Council, citizens of Allen Park, let's pray. Almighty God, we come to you and we thank you for your goodness and your mercy. Thank you for how your leadership and your authority is extended down to men and women like ourselves. We thank you for our mayor, Gail McLeod. We thank you for her administrative team, City Council, and the oversight that they give to this town, how they fight for us, how they advocate for us. Bless this evening and the business at hand, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Mike, if you'll take the roll call, please.
All right. Councilman Wertzbacher.
Present.
Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
Councilman Schleck.
Present.
Councilman Barr.
Yo.
Yes. Either way.
Hi.
Councilman Valerius.
Here.
Councilman Neck.
Here.
Treasurer Simer.
Present.
And Mayor Gail McLeod.
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wertzbacher.
Through the chair, oh.
Yes.
Through the chair, we'll be removing number one. But I would like to put, is there anyone from Plant Moran here? Oh, okay, then we'll leave him at the bottom. And then apparently Resolution R3 will be sent back to the DDA and returned to the council on the 16th of...
December.
December. So we'll be taking that. So R1 will actually be top shelf golf. Three will be the fencing. And four will be the professional service, Mayor. Are there any other changes?
Okay, so we are down to three resolutions. Resolution one will be the top shelf golf. Resolution two will be the dog park. And resolution three will be the professional services agreement with Plant Moran.
Yes.
I have, is this acceptable to the individuals who made the motion in second? Mr. Lloyd and Mr. Wertzbacher?
Yes.
So, no.
Thank you, Mike, for walking us through that. Are any other corrections or changes?
I'm sorry, just a point of clarification, Mayor. One is now top shelf?
Correct.
Two is dog park?
Correct.
Three is Plant Moran?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing not all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda is approved. I have a motion to approve the minutes from the October 14th meeting.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Any changes or corrections? Hearing not all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes are approved. We now come to organizational business, the first one being the proclamation for the National Native American Heritage Month. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by Native Americans and indigenous peoples, and whereas the contributions of Native Americans have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of Americans today, and whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States. And whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National Native American Heritage Month. And whereas, in honor of National Native American Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities, have been planned. Now, therefore, I, Gail B. McLeod, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Allen Park, Michigan, do hereby proclaim November 2025 as National Native American Heritage Month in the city of Allen Park and urge all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities in witness whereof. I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Allen Park, Michigan, to be affixed this 20th day of October 2025. And I have emailed the proclamation to the Daughters of the American Revolution, who have asked for this. Our next proclamation has to do with Family Court Awareness Month. And in the past, I have not done a formal proclamation. We did a recognition last year, and I had, we had someone in attendance. And this year, I felt it was very important to do a proclamation, especially as every time we pick up the newspaper, we see evidence that something needs to be done in our legal system to protect those from domestic violence and to protect our children. I know people who have been in this business, and it's reprehensible what they have to deal with and what they see. Family Court Awareness Month. Whereas the mission of Family Court Awareness Month, FCAM, is to highlight the need to prioritize child safety and family court as one in three families in Michigan are exposed to domestic abuse. And whereas an estimated 58,000 children in the U.S. are ordered into unsupervised contact with abusive parents each year, resulting in almost 1,000 children in the United States murdered during visitation with an abusive parent since 2008. In Michigan, 39 children have been murdered by a parent since 2008 during divorce or custody disputes, including six-year-old Rowan Maury Poles of Caledonia, Michigan in 2024, and three-year-old Dylan Feeble of Kent County in 2021. And whereas their families have been working to increase awareness of child safety issues by introducing Rowan's Act to improve the safety of missing children in Michigan and improve response to domestic violence, allowing a faster response for Amber Alerts to be issued if police believe a missing child is in danger. And whereas Washtenaw County law enforcement hopes to improve safety and outcomes for families exposed to domestic violence by using lethality assessments in all domestic violence cases. And whereas the mission of FCAM is to promote judicial education that would include training on domestic violence, child abuse, childhood trauma, coercive control, and post-separation abuse for all professionals involved in family court cases. And whereas FCAM recognizes the need to incorporate evidence-based research into the court's decisions, including the adverse childhood experiences study, which highlights long-term effects of exposure to abuse in childhood and emphasizes the need for research-informed and impartial decision-making to protect children's well-being. And whereas Family Court Awareness Month aims to encourage collaboration among legislators, advocates, professionals, and the community to improve family court practices, ensuring they are guided by evidence-based research and prioritize the safety and best interests of children. Now, therefore, I, Gail B. McLeod, do hereby declare the month of November 2025 to be Family Court Awareness Month. And I think that we may have someone here who would like to come up and speak. And I will give her the proclamation. If you would like to take this first?
Thank you so much. It means a lot to me and a lot of the families involved because that's what all the children have been doing. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jessica Magalski. I was in front of you guys last year during November. And I am a member of the Protective Parents of Michigan. I would like to thank the city of Allen Park for acknowledging this. That safety should be the priority in family court and custody decisions. And it's true, one in three families, Michigan families, are directly impacted by domestic violence. But abuse also affects each and every one of us in our communities. I really appreciate you guys acknowledging this and declaring it as a proclamation. With Rowan's Act and with Caden's Law, these are laws that we are trying to push for, for the safety of our children, mine included. They are with their father right now, and it is the most terrifying thing that I can go through. It would be different if safety wasn't an issue, but it is continuously. And through Wayne County and your guys' help to push this, I really, we really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move on to the city administrator's report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and residents of Allen Park. The Water Department is currently doing concrete repairs from the utility work that took place over the summer. The city is restarting water-led service line replacements over the next month. The Department of Public Service currently have street sweepers out every day and will continue to street sweep until all the leaves are off the roads and trees, providing no snow. That's kind of hard, honestly. People don't understand. You can't get the leaves with the snow. City offices will be closed on Veterans Day, Tuesday, November 11th. There will be a Veterans Day observance ceremony at the Memorial on Southfield and Outer Drive on Tuesday, November 11th at 11:00 a.m. Thank you to all the veterans for their service to our country. The Downtown Development Authority is promoting Small Business Saturday, a national event which takes place on Saturday, November 29th. Stay tuned for information on special promotions. Halloween is this Friday, October 31st. The Police Department recommends that the trick-or-treating time takes place from 5:30 to 8:00. There is no ordinance. It's a recommendation. Author Talk with David Burkett, the Detroit Lions, and Illustrated Timeline takes place at the Allen Park Library on Monday, November 3rd at 6:00 p.m. An American Sign Language Basics class for families takes place on Saturday, November 1st from 2:00 to 3:00 at the Allen Park Library. We would like to also congratulate Officer Kevin Locklear on his upcoming retirement. He officially retires on November 2nd with over 25 years of service. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept and file the city administrator's report?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Valer, tag team over there.
I'll do second.
Second by Mr. Barr, or the other way around?
Him first.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Hearing not all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Do we now come to public comments? We have five minutes to speak. All we ask is that you provide your name and the street on which you live. Do not provide your full address. And the only other thing we ask is that you keep your comments civil.
Good evening, Mark Bailey, Philomen Boulevard. I'm in front of the council now for the 37th year. Inviting you to come down and enjoy the reception and function that we're providing on Park Avenue at the Elks Club Friday night. Please welcome our special guests, some who have been coming all 37 years. And outside, it's always different. Instantaneous pumpkins did happen this year. Instantaneous. And over the decades, it's been up and down, depends on Mother Nature. But they're there, and we'll see how far we get decorated. What's not done, I only, I'm the only one who knows. So please come down and enjoy the show, and thank you very much. You know where my heart is. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Good evening, City Council, Madam Mayor. Ray McGus and Quant. It's amazing how sometimes we get together and try to figure out what's going to happen. Nothing against you, Joe, or through the chair, Mayor. Joe, you're our city attorney. Yes, you are. But nothing against you. You're not a judge. We take your advice, like I would take any attorney's advice. But as you know, and I'm not no attorney. Attorneys dispractice law. The judges are the ones who actually tell you what's going to happen. They're the final say. Oh, no, they're not. It can go all the way up to the Supreme Court. And sometimes people don't even take that as a final say. So with that, that's that. I'm going to ask you a couple of questions. Who owns the Showmobile? You can answer that now, or you can answer it later. Now, taxpayers' money. When? I go ahead and I go to a street fair and I buy beer, is that what taxpayers' money? Yes or no? Oh, maybe it isn't. But it becomes taxpayers' money when? After they go ahead and go through all their work that they do for nothing? And then turn around and have to put that money someplace, to put it someplace? And it goes, and it goes into an account here within our city? Now all of a sudden, it becomes taxpayers' money? Kind of crazy, if you really look at it. Really look at that. So, the maid of Michigan, through the DDA, is that taxpayers' money? Buying and turning around and paying for music, musicians to go ahead and play? Is that taxpayers' money? Does it help me as a taxpayer? Yes or no? Maybe we should look at that a little bit deeper to find out how we take care of our citizens here. Does the citizens have to go ahead? Maybe that money should go someplace else, go in another coffer. So what happens to beautification committee? The DDA turns around and they give their money to who? To businesses. I'm a taxpayer. I don't want no business be taken care of. I'm not saying that, but some are. Is that illegal now, or isn't it? That is a, and what, and through the chair, Mayor? Joe, when you made that presentation, what you did and told us what the law is, it never said shell. No place in there did it say shell. No place. I read that, I was listening to you very carefully. No place did it say shell. It said, well, ah, who, ah. That's more or less what it said. Maybe we should start looking at what we really are as a city. Who controls? Nothing through the chair. Ben's contract. Does the DDA? Is the final say, you people? The DDA says, I want him to stay? Does his contract says that's it, final? Or does it still come up to the city, and you as individuals are going to determine if he's going to stay or not, like you did to Jennifer Kibbe? Something needs to be done. So as a taxpayer, and I know I'm listened to, because, boy, they talk to me at breakfast a lot of times. I'm going to tell you what this citizen's going to do. I'm going to take some of my hard-earned taxpayer money, right now, which is 100, 200, and 300. And guess who it's going to? Who do you think? Not me. Definitely not you people, because I have no idea who you would give this money to. But this money's going to go to Mr. Bailey. So you have a great day. Thank you very much, and enjoy yourself.
Thank you, Ray.
Here you go, Mark. Your 30 dollars, you may do anything you want to do with them. Anything, sir.
It will go to a good cause, thank you.
I know it will, and I trust you, my friend. 37 years, and how are you treated?
May I have some order, please?
Hi, Mary Jane Kittelham, 4th Street. I believe I'm speaking on Resolution 2, the dog park. I think it's 2. I know you can't answer questions, but I'm hoping when it comes down to this resolution, that you will address some of these concerns. First, I'd like to know how this even got passed. It was never discussed, never brought up here, never said yea, nay. It was snuck into the budget underneath a general line that included furniture and the park. And they said, just because it's in the budget, that it passes? No, that's not how budgets works. You do a line item. That money can be used for that, but if it's not used, it can be earmarked for something else. So it never was passed. But seeing how you all believe somehow that this passed, I'd like to know exactly how much it's going to cost us for extra insurance. I hear a little bit. Well, what's a little bit? My little bit and your little bit are two different things, I'm quite sure. What is it costing us? What do they actually cover? Do they cover lawsuits? Do they cover the attorneys? Do they cover incidentals? What do they cover? Does it go up every six months, every year? Does it go up with every claim? What is this insurance? The DPS isn't secured. How are you going to secure it? You think cameras are going to secure something? You see robberies all the time, where people have hoodies on and take things. You're going to have everybody going in and out of the park. How is that going to be covered? I'd like, what I'd also like to know is, who's going to be cleaning it up? Who's going to be taking care of it? Is it underneath the DPS? Which is a separate line thing that we're going to have to pay the DPS to do this, underneath something different? Because it seems like everything in the city, they don't work together. They all have to pay each other. And I'm sure it has something to do with the balancing of the budget, but is this going to be under DPS? Is it coming out of their budget? Or are you going to have to fund this every year as a separate thing? Who's going to be monitoring the park, as in who's coming and going? Are you going to register who the person is? If I'm married and I have two dogs, are both of us going to be registered, and both of our dogs? Or I'm going to be registered and not the other one? And how are you going to know what dog? What happens if I have a dog visiting me, and I have a pass to go to the park, and I register my mini schnauzer, but I have a rottweiler visiting me, and I take the rottweiler to the park? How are you going to know? Who's going to keep track of the vaccinations? Are you going to have somebody call out when the vaccinations are expired? Is somebody going to monitor that all the time? Who, oh, policing. I understand the property was purchased from Melvindale. I might have this wrong, so if I do, I apologize. And it's underneath, the city now owns it, but the property is still Melvindale's. You said, I mean, or is it, did you change the property line? Who's going to police it, I guess, is what I'm getting down to. If there's any incidental, is it the Allen Park that have to go over there? Is it Melvindale? Is it a joint venture? I mean, I know you worked that out, and I'm just asking when it comes time, if you can address this. This would be great. Finally, they were saying, if you add this up, it's saying that it was approved. If you add up your figures, $140,000 was set aside in a general budget. That was to cover furniture that wasn't replaced, that felt that they needed to be replaced, even though it didn't. At $50,000, leaving you $90,000 for the dog park, if you so used it for that. Well, currently, your dog park is at $102,562.17. You are $12,562.17 over the budget already. And you haven't even paid for your insurance, and you haven't even addressed how you're going to keep the maintenance on this, or who's going to monitor it, or anything. So I ask that when it comes to that section of Resolution 2, if you could please address all these concerns, I'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, Pam Smith, Philomen.
Make sure you're talking into Mike.
Is that better? As a dog owner and a dog lover, we visit the dog parks daily. For the dog parks that we go to, they are set up very nicely. There's all kinds of security, as far as going to the city, having your pet registered, ensuring that your vaccinations are up to date before you get a key fob, a key card, whatever it takes to open the gates. There's reports that can be run that tell you who's expiring, and those key fobs can be shut off. There are cameras that can watch the park itself and the people that enter. There are two separate sections, one for larger dogs, one for smaller dogs. Depending on weight or size, can vary. There can be lighting. The owner of those dogs are responsible for the safety of any other person coming in the park, along with their animal. Yes, I have a husband, so there's two of us, and one baby girl. We would both be registered for that animal, because he may want to take her when I'm not around, or I may want to take her when he's not around. So it's very easily trackable, and it's a very secure area. As far as not having enough funds, hey, there's such a thing as fundraisers. I'll sign up any day of the week to get us more money. I could personally give my own money to go towards a cause that I find very important to my animal so that she can run around and play with other dogs and socialize. It's very important for animals not to just be home alone. So other dogs and activities for them to roam and play, jump on the structures, whatever the case may be. It's important for them. We are supposed to clean up after our own pets. Granted, somebody doesn't. But we watch these animals in any of the parks we are in. Somebody doesn't see their dog go poopy, we take our bag and we pick it up. Or we say, hey, so-and-so, so-and-so just dropped a loaf over there. Let's take care of it. We're very responsible, and we love our animals. This is something that's going to profit our city as far as us socializing as people. We come here, and it's not always positive. We come here and people complain and moan and groan, and you can't make everybody happy. But we can do something to make our pets happy. So I foresee this as a very positive venture. I'm 100% for it, because I love my little girl. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Wayne Smith, Philomen. Almost everything what she said. But I think it's a great idea. What a great community to be able to have a dog park. I know a lot of communities do not have that. I trust everybody here that when you have a committee, that you're going to iron out all those details. And I think sometimes you have people that, you know, are a little frustrated about maybe something that's new, like a dog park. I don't know if those are the same type of people that would maybe hate pocket park, you know, or murals, or anything that maybe we spend a little bit of money on to try and make the city look a little bit better. But I'm 100% behind the dog park. I think there was a survey that went out a few years ago, or last year. There was a lot of positive response to it. I believe that if it was Parks and Rec, this has been in their five-year plan for quite a while. So I would certainly encourage the board here, the council, to pass and make sure that we do get a dog park. I just, I just don't see any downside to it. And again, I trust everybody here that you'd make the right decision. Thank you.
Charles Bloom Champagne. Well, first off, I came here just originally just to thank the DPS. They filled my pothole I was talking about two weeks ago, after step, step, steps of getting that done. So first off, I wanna say thank you to that. I would hope, again, as my representatives, that, again, talk to DTE to get these light poles down my street on Champagne and Allen. There's some down on Allen Road in front of some businesses that just keep coming and it's been, again, a year, a year or two that they've just been sitting there. Again, it's not hurting anyone, but it just doesn't look proper for a downtown community to have just random light poles. It was an interesting work session and so far, council meeting, it's, it reminded me back in the day when we had a past resident, back in the day, named Malter, who would always come up here at the council meetings about wanting scholarships for the students. So my understanding, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought the Festivus Committee was about giving out scholarships back in the day. But again, I could be wrong. I'm not perfect. I wanna thank Parks and Recs for working on getting a new park by the Cabrini area, Rourke Park area, as well as our police and fire who helped Southgate with that fire senior apartment complex. Again, fantastic job to our safety officers everywhere in Down River for that. The dog park has been talked about for years. That's why we have that Russi, the dog. Just, I personally, I, with the, what I've saw, even at the work session, I, it's just, personally, just stop kicking the can, just, let's just get this done. With the thing with the director of the DDA, when I hear about, well, we have a meeting in December, how many times the council meeting, well, we gotta have a special meeting come up in the next week or so? It's possible. I'm just saying, if this is, again, something very important that needs to get done, it, again, I know, like we say, government takes forever to get something done. But also, I just heard from everyone up here saying how I wish we could help the, with the pumpkin patch thing. Something, volunteer, pick up the pumpkins that, for next year. Don't, personally donate money to Mark Bailey, like Ray just did. Do something for those, for those, those with special needs, so that they can have a safe place for Halloween, like everyone else, a special place for them every year for future to come. We are almost a hundred years of this city, and it's like, don't get rid of events, don't stop events. That makes this city wonderful to come to. I also, again, in the past, had mentioned about, we have a couple of our mayor pictures up here. Have all of them. Whether you like the past or not, they're history. Don't put them at the historical house. Put them up here, put them back there, I don't care. They're history. And I, again, wanna thank Mark Bailey for what he's done for thirty-seven years. I can say most of you weren't even living here that long, or we weren't born yet. Mr. Lloyd. But again, a positive event, positive things, that's what makes Allen Park great. So again, just keep up the good work. Same with our department heads and our departments everywhere in our city. But again, I thank you, again, DPS, for filling the pothole in front of my house. Other than have a great night and have a safe Halloween. Thank you.
And shot local.
Point of information, that was the year that I was born. So I, so I was, I might have been an infant there at the first one.
There's no one else coming up? We will close public comments and move on to the consent agenda, which tonight consists of claims and accounts and the payroll report. Motion, please. Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Schleck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will pay our bills. Resolution one. To approve the application received from Top Shelf Golf at sixty-six fifty Allen Road for a new on-premises DDA slash redevelopment Class C and SDM license with Sunday sales and entertainment permit. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Wirtz.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, so we have received the, a request from Top Shelf Golf, which it would be, will be located at sixty-six five zero Allen Road, the former Scalisi's building. So we're finally seeing hopefully some development over there really soon. So this is good news so far. So they've requested an on-premise Class C liquor license and entertainment license at the, at that property. Now, that, because it's part of the DDA ability to get this type of license. So the clerk and I have been working through this to get this squared away. So it's before you tonight, because it's part of the application process with the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. So approval tonight for this resolution allows him to proceed at the state level to get this license. So what it is, you recognize and you approve that this was, would be a good location, a viable location for this type of business. And Mr. Clerk, if I've missed anything, please let me know. But that's the gist of it.
Oh, could I add? And I think you meant, there, there actually is a downtown development liquor license policy, and I was hoping we'd talk about it before the meeting, but, you know, we didn't get to that. But I think their application meets that. But if, for those who have not seen it, I can pass it out and we can just quickly go
Through the chair, we did see this policy. However, number one.
Well, wait, wait a second, Mike. We can, are, are we, are we a couple short? Well, I mean, oh, I think Gil needs one. Yeah, just, I, I think the application, actually, the way Matt put this together, he meets all these requirements, but I just, I want everyone to see this. So you'll see the, I'm sorry, Mike, if you wanna go through them, you can.
No, no, go right ahead.
So the first point is compliance with applicable city ordinances, including but not limited to zoning ordinance, ordinances. What Matt presented indicates that, that in fact is true. It's, the property is appropriately zoned. He also indicated that it's in compliance with the master plan. It's generally, now, compliance with applicable Michigan liquor license control, MLCC requirements. It appears like it is, but the final say is, as, as Matt indicated, that, that will be with the state of Michigan. You can consider any thoughts you, you receive from the public. You also consider the compatibility of the use with the character and nature of the properties and anything else you deem relevant. So this is the policy. These are the things you consider in making your decision. I just wanna point that out, and then you guys can ask Mike, Matt, excuse me, Matt or Mike, any questions.
Mike, did you have any thing to add on that?
No, but I thought this was the part of the process where, if you did read Matt's memo, we discovered it was like, everything we were reading, their attorney was like, we already did that. We already did that. That's our job. That's what we get paid. So that's all I wanted to add. But this seems more in line with what they needed to.
When you say their attorney, that means Mike?
The applicants, yeah. So, so what this is, is this is a, I call it a carrot, to encourage people to come in and develop a business in the city. So you, a city council, you know, you, that's what you're looking at. You know, do you like this business? Will this be good for the city? So.
Yeah, we've, we've done a number of these throughout the years, and it's a, it's a nice license that they can obtain, and it's been good for a number of businesses, I think Major Tomato.
Major Tomato. Glass Onion is another example. The Streetery is another example. So we've done this in the past in this similar format.
I do have one question. Somewhere in here, I remember reading about a social district. We don't have a social district. Not yet. But why, how can you do something for an application if it's not in existence yet?
So can, is, are you talking about the off-premises license?
Yes.
Like this SDM license?
His, his application is actually for this Class C three. This has nothing to do with the, the social district.
I think what you're, you're reading through the chair, I think what you're reading into and why it's so confusing with the state is, I think it's, might be piggyback onto his other one or something. Like, he's already, that, the DBA or one of them is already a license holder. It doesn't have to do with the social district.
Yeah, it's completely separate from the social district.
Although, off the record, I mean, that would add to that.
We're working towards the social district, but this is, that would be completely separate from this, this application.
So then what is the off-premises license, the, that he signed, the SDM license? And it's for, he's had it twice. And it's Sunday sales permits in the morning?
Is that for liquor sales to go?
Correct. Yep. That's what he does.
Off-premise?
Sort of like.
Because I see the Class C license.
It's what he already has for Top Shelf.
Oh, that would be enclosed, contained.
Correct.
Do you see on the top of the, yeah. I think that is what maybe Mr. Brown was referring to. And then the times on Sunday sales start at seven in the morning and they end at one AM the following next morning. Is that correct?
People like to golf in the morning. People like to drink when they golf.
If I can just add something that might not have been hit on this. So this is, these are licenses are offered in the DDA district, not by the DDA. It can be done this way, okay? The other is, these licenses, if Mr. Ashoko were to close his business, that license goes away. It does not go there. It's not a normal liquor license. Just, I wanted to make everyone aware of that also.
Well, and he needs to invest no less than seventy-five grand in a building. That's the, again, that's, that's a thing that's, it encourages redevelopment of dilapidated buildings. If someone just wants to come in and get a liquor license and they don't wanna improve the real estate, they don't qualify for these properties for this program.
Just out of curiosity, with like, Major Tomato, was that like retroactively that they put in seventy-five thousand?
Correct. Yeah, because they did renovation first.
Got it.
Yes.
Just, just out of curiosity. I know that's not pertinent to this in particular, but.
No, but actually, that was a bit of a debate when that occurred. Because we wanted proof that that was gonna, when did it occur? Nice you bring it up. It's kind of like a sore spot. But it all got worked out.
Not supposed to laugh at it.
Through the chair, someone asked how many we had, and it's like over two hundred per this investment downtown. So I don't think we have two hundred buildings, but. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any other questions?
I'll just make a, make the comment that I think that this is, that just the kind of business that we want in downtown. It's something for people to do. It's, it's gonna bring people in from other parts of the, the area. And just speaking from the master plan, because my other role is on planning commission, that that's precisely what, what we're working at towards our master plan. This is, this is exactly the kind of business that we want.
It, it offers something unique too, that we don't have.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is approved. Thank you. Resolution two. A resolution to, one, approve the dog park fencing installation services award to Proline Fencing LLC in the amount of fifty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And related technology implementation to award the work to Actron Systems in the amount of thirty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-one cents. And resolve finally, number three, approve the award of concrete work to Savone Cement in the amount of ten thousand dollars with funds from account four zero one triple zero nine eight five zero zero one. Motion, please.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Mr. Filipski.
Well, thank you, Mayor McLeod, city council members. As noted, this would be the kind of first step in getting this dog park that we've been talking about constructed. It's a mouthful, that resolution, it involves a combo of things. That's not typical of what I like to present, but it's important in this case, because in order to build this, we have as our next step to kind of coordinate with the various contractors. We don't wanna be stepping on each other's toes, and we wanna get planning for it, because we intend to build this in the spring, maybe some work on it, if the weather permits, late this fall. But just to go through a couple items that, that we're asking for here, the fencing, we did put out to bid. I've attached the bid sheet here for, for your review. I learned more about fencing in this than I ever thought I would, because we had a lot of response to this, and I kind of carefully looked at what all the bidders were offering. They weren't exactly apples to apples, so I spent some time really getting into the detail of that, and I'm recommending Proline Fencing. I think they're best suited to, to provide what we're looking for there. As noted, there's also a lot of access and tech, surveillance technology that we need to implement there. We currently have a vendor that we use, Actron. They have our, they're integrated with our computer systems, and we would need that, for example, for the clerk's office, when this is up and running, for them to be able to facilitate turning the fobs on and off, providing the licenses, things like that, as well as security with, with the cameras. And so rather than bringing an additional system at extra cost, we would want to integrate with the existing vendor. And then lastly, as you know, we have restrooms available at that park site, and we would like to make an ADA compliant pathway in between the large, large and small dog area. And so there's some work involved in that. And we used, we requested from Savone Cement, our approved sectional contractor, to provide us a, a cost for that based on the specification. I wanna note, he provided a spec, and then was, I think, maybe an hour later after providing it to me, he said he thought about it and he wanted to provide an in-kind donation. He's a dog lover, Mario Savone. So he revised it and said that, that he wanted to contribute that to this initiative. So he's able to do all of that concrete work for ten thousand dollars. So in total, as noted previously, it's a hundred and two thousand dollars, five hundred and sixty-two. For this, that would leave us with thirty-seven thousand dollars approximately, what we would, if this is approved tonight, we would then begin planning on amenities, benches, tables. There's kind of toy structures that the dogs can play on. We'll also need to account for some signage and things like that. We do, don't have water available there, maybe in the phase two. But, so I think we're doing pretty good. I'm, I'm pretty pleased with the way this looks. It gives us a lot of options, and so this is here for your approval.
Thank you. Questions?
Through the chair.
Uh, a lot was brought up, uh, from the comments we heard from the public. It's my understanding too, when, uh, policies, dog size, et cetera, et cetera, will eventually come to council. I would imagine the policies that will lay out all these little nuances, if you will. When we had our study session, that was my understanding. Is that still the case?
Yeah, that is. Um, knowing that we could move forward on this and that would initiate the conversations that we have internally about division of, of the duties. Um, I do have some experience with dog parks, so I am aware of all the various issues when it comes to administering them. That would be a collaborative, uh, discussion that we'd have. Um, and if it's the council's will, we can definitely, um, make a second presentation at some point with where we've landed in terms of the rules and, and, um, how it will function.
I can't speak for everyone, but I definitely would like that.
Sure.
Through the chair, we do actually have a committee we've had for about eight months with three residents and other department heads and clerk's office as well. So we have been talking, just so you're aware, with a committee in-house that will then determine this. A lot of these things were discussed, just not finalized.
Yep.
Mr. Valerius.
No, I, uh, some of my questions, just for the, you know, if any of the questions that were brought up during comments, you know, were addressed and gradually, like, the access, which we discussed about the key fob access. And then of course, uh, I think in our conversations that we had prior to this, we mentioned about the, the vaccinations and all that being entered, you know, uh, before key fobs are, you know, issued to residents and, uh, everything else. So I know it's a, you know, it's a, it's a process and planning, but I think a lot of the stuff that was brought up, you know, ha- has been, has been talked about, you know, with, and I know it's, it's not a small endeavor, but we're glad that you have prior experience, you know, in your past related to these issues that we could definitely utilize, you know, as we plan this. So, thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Question on the, uh, budgeting.
Yes.
I have those answers.
Okay.
Sorry.
It's all right. No, so what was presented during the work session, were those figures close? Were they accurate? The work session, a hundred and, today, four hundred and forty thousand?
Okay, we didn't talk about it today, the work session. This is-
Public comment, you mean?
Public comment, we did. Or what was, okay, that's what it was.
So I can answer for that. So if you go through the budget process, we even had a study session specific to capital planning, which we discussed the theater property and a dog park. And if you go back into the budget process, in capital, dog park had its own line item for a hundred and forty. Furniture was thirty-five with its own line item in capital. That was not hidden. That was actually discussed during the budget process, specifically discussed in front of this council and mayor. That wasn't hidden by any means. Uh, Mr. Lobb talked about it in his presentations twice with a study session and there in public, uh, hearing that we had regarding the budget. So we are not over budget. We're actually under budget with this so far. There's a hundred and forty thousand dollars specific to this dog park specific. That's in budget laid out in the capital plan.
So the thirty-five thousand was not included?
Was for furniture specific.
Because in the budget that it said, a hundred and forty thousand, then below, it said some of this will include furniture.
That meant for the dog park, like benches, things that Mr. Filipski was just talking about. That wasn't for the city hall furniture. That was separate.
Okay.
Right, the comment, I think too, that, um, of, obviously, we have people with experience with dog parks. We've got, uh, individuals who have been using the Woodhaven, uh, facility because we have reciprocal agreement with them. Uh, there were so, several visits out to the Farmington Dog Park where there was a lot of good information that was garnered from them. Um, I know that there, I think the committee, I sat in at their initial meeting and it seems like it was longer than eight, eight months ago, but, um, you have things about fundraising too and the fact that you could probably offset some of these costs with, um, sponsorships by, um, pet supply stores, businesses, veterinarians, that type of thing. So, uh, I think that there's a lot of things, like Mario Savone, who is a very much a dog lover, uh, is contributing to it. I think is just, just one of the tips of the iceberg. Also, want to remind everyone that, um, we were given Rusty the Dog by Baker College and, uh, he's been keeping watch on that area. And I am still in contact with the, uh, sculptor who created Rusty the Dog. He lives, uh, here in Michigan and I have been keeping him apprised of our, the status. And if he is able, he will attend, uh, any opening ceremony of that dog park and where he can see his, uh, his, uh, sculpture again and make sure that we're taking good care of it. Any other, uh, questions or comments?
Yeah, when I first got my packet and I'm looking at it, I was wondering why we didn't go out to bid for cement or for the monitors.
Sure.
But then I talked to you before the meeting and you were explaining that we already use Atron-
Yeah.
Um, already in the system, so it would connect with the system.
Yeah.
So, with the cement, before you had said you got Mr. Savone's quote and then he called you back and said he would give you a discount, did you at that time though get any other quotes from any other cement company?
No, in, in putting this together, I did not. Um, they were approved. He was, I, I don't remember what month it was, but earlier this year, it was brought before the council for approval for sectioning and it's based on per unit prices. Um, so, so long as he was willing to honor those, um, you know, we would be, be in the clear for that and, and kind of make the process a little bit smoother for, for getting the bids on that. So, uh, I'm confident, very confident in his ability to do the work. Um, otherwise, if that were of question, I definitely would have bid it out.
Can also speak on half of his number. I don't want to say how much, but that number before he was a third of what he said were costing. We get in a bid for that price either. I'm just-
I'm just saying when I have my packet and I don't see it and I can't compare, so because I did email Aaron and ask for some of the other bids so that I could compare the fencing, um, which we talked about.
Yeah.
And so then I was able to see where he, what he was looking at. But I do have a question about the DPS and the safety there.
Sure.
So, I know at a previous meeting, we had talked about that those gates would not close, right at DPS, the front gates.
Correct.
Right, well, they wouldn't close. So my question is, anybody could come in the dog park then at any time and use the dog park or?
Well, they would be restricted. They would need a key fob. We would have hours. We would be able to surveil to find out if there is even a member in good standing that decided they wanted to go after hours and use it. And that would be something that we would administratively address. And that's for dog park owners. In terms of just the random person walking through, uh, Mr. Murray's right, the front gates don't close, but we do where we have all the equipment and everything else, there's an automated gate that closes daily. Um, so they would not have access to the yard or any of our storage area or anything like that.
So, using their key fob if they came in, okay, they'd still be able to use the key fob technically, right? On the dog park?
Well, actually, we would program it. I mean, to interrupt you, we would program it so it wouldn't open the gate beyond a certain time.
That's what I, that's what I wanted to ask, yes. So it could be programmed so that it's not being able to, right?
Yep. Same with the bathrooms as well, cause there, there's issues. You don't want to have a restroom facility open at any hour. That would be the same there. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, a good question on that. The, um, to, to reiterate though, the bathrooms are going to be accessible by key fob also.
Yes, the same key fob.
Just, just the dog park people. So, yeah, so they wouldn't just be, they're open to various and sundry individuals.
That's right.
I, um, just have a comment, in the chair. Um, early September, I spent three, three days in Grand Rapids with Michigan Municipal League Conference and seminars. And, uh, before I went up there, I was able to do some research on some communities, uh, I'm sorry, communities that were similar to Allen Park in size. And, um, they all shared one thing in common, that they all had downtown shopping districts, business areas, that through the years had just disappeared. Okay. Um, a lot of nail salons, a lot of places to get haircuts, but there was really no destination for the downtown areas. So, I, uh, researched eight different communities throughout the state that have came back. And, um, I wanted to hear each and one of their stories. Uh, I spoke with city managers, some of the mayors, uh, council members, but mostly it was through the city managers. And they all basically, at, at different points of the conversation, they all had the same similar eight items that brought them back. One of them was a dog park. One of them was having a meeting space downtown. And, um, just getting people involved in the community by getting them downtown. Once they had a destination downtown for like a social district, businesses started coming to them. Their storefronts that had been emptied for years in cold storage, they're all full. One of them is actually nearby and it's downtown Farmington, Michigan, where my family had its business. And the joke in the seventies, when my family sold the storefronts downtown was, the last one to leave Farmington, turn off the lights. Well, it is not like that today. It is very vibrant. Um, you can go down there anytime, day or night. They have a social district. They have meeting space. Restaurants up the galore. I, and I'm, I, and I'm talking about family-owned businesses. And it, it's something to see, um, along with these other communities. So, you know, I think we're on the right track, follow the year, five-year plan, you know, with a dog park, social district, meeting spaces downtown. It's a winning formula. It's a proven winning formula.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That is approved. We will now move-
Thank you.
Thank you. On to Resolution Three, which is a resolution to approve the professional services agreement and appoint Plant Moran as city auditors for the fiscal year twenty-four slash twenty-five audit. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by?
Everyone.
By everyone. By Mr. Slack, second by Ms. Nick. Mr. Lobb is sprinting up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I think this item should be pretty straightforward. It's, uh, just the promise that we're gonna pay Plant Moran for the auditing services that they've already been here for. So.
Well, that's good.
Thank you. You can sprint back to your seat now.
Any, uh, comments or questions? Not so fast. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. We now come to elected officials comments and we'll start this evening with Mr. Rastimer. Looks like he's gonna celebrate St. Patrick's Day.
Uh, no, this is, uh, Allen Park Jags Day. The football team, um, is playing, uh, the first round of playoffs, um, this Friday. At home against Bedford. So, um, it will be a fun Halloween for those Jags, for sure. Um, for those of you not going to the game, or perhaps you can go before, I'd encourage you to visit the, uh, Elks event. Um, they do a fantastic job. Uh, Wees for My Business have been sponsors for the past eighteen years. Thank you very much, Mark Bailey. Um, congratulations also, uh, to Officer Locklear for your more than twenty-five years. Thank you so much for your service. And, uh, last but not least, happy National First Responders Day. It's especially meaningful right now as we, um, have just had that, uh, horrific event at the senior complex. So, uh, prayers to the people involved and prayers to, um, our first responders, you know, those who run into the fire and the rest of us run away. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Mezzy.
Yes, um, I'd like to recognize Cabrini's football team, who made it an undefeated season to the prep bowl, but did lose in the prep bowl to, um, Ann Arbor Richard, which back in the nineties, we beat them whole time. So. Anyways, no. So I'd like to congratulate Cabrini on a record that, that was incredible. It's been years since they held a season of undefeated. Um, with that, I'd like to thank you all for coming out. God bless you and good night.
Thank you. And there's no elections here, correct?
No.
And this evening, we'll start with Mr. Slack.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say thank you to all that came up and presented ideas and thoughts during public comment. It's always good to hear. I want to thank Allen Park, Karen Church and the DDA and everyone that volunteered, uh, for the trick-or-treat on Park. It was a great night. My family had a blast. Despite the line, it was quite impressive to see how large this event has come since I've been on council. I also want to thank the historical commission for their event they had on Sunday. Great pumpkin party. I came out and covered the pumpkin myself and I'm sure they're all gonna be lit up and they were able to get these pumpkins, uh, from a donation. So that was fantastic to see. As it's been said already, Halloween is gonna be five-thirty to eight PM. So have a safe, fun night on Halloween and if you see me out with my Paw Patrol marshal and my little astronaut, be free to say hi. Uh, as our treasurer said, it is First Responders Day. So, thank you for everything you've done. I know I've heard some stories from those in the fire department, uh, that fought that American House fire in Southgate. Uh, definitely important that we do everything we can to make sure they have the resources they can retain, keep repellent. Uh, with that also, the, uh, Allen Park Police and Allen Park Schools that were there, uh, that dealt with the lockdown boot system. No one was hurt. School was safe and, uh, Mr. Lloyd could tell you if it was open the day before or after. I wasn't sure. I would also want to echo beautification commission. They're having a senior lead cleanup on November eighth. That's gonna be me at Park and Harrison at ten AM. So, Green and Ray can help out. You can always need more help. Some of the sporting events were already mentioned, so I won't say those, but I will say the ones that weren't mentioned. Uh, Melvindale Boys Soccer Team, MNAP, Melvindale North Allen Park, it's left behind sometimes. They won their first district title since twenty nineteen. So that was very, very impressive by them. And the Motor City Muskies, a, uh, semi-pro hockey team. Uh, they play in Lincoln Park, but they welcome every downriver community to come enjoy their team. And may tell you, if you like cheap beer, bites, old school hockey, it's quite the event. For ten dollars, you can't beat it. The first event was free. It was a lot of fun. And I do want to wish everyone a good luck on, uh, anyone across the state on any elections. As said, we don't have elections in our city, but we do in our local communities. And last but not least, before we meet again, is Veterans Day, November eleventh. As a veteran, it's very important to me. So I want to say thank you to all the veterans in our community for all the service and, and those that continue to serve. So, that, are you?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd.
Um, first, uh, echoing, uh, a big thanks to, uh, Mr. Bailey for thirty-seven years of service to the community and everything he's done to put on, um, the trick-or-treat event, um, for our community, but also for, um, the special needs individuals that are provided a safe space that they can come and celebrate the holidays. It's, uh, as Mr. Blevins noted, it's one of those things, every time, uh, Mr. Bailey comes up, I don't have to do the math about how long it is because it's however old I am on that year. So, uh, it's been, it's been going on as long as I'm alive. Um, you know, and it's something that, and my wife has a transplant in Allen Park. Um, it's important to bring fu- fresh blood in every once in a while. Um, and it's one of the things that she finds attractive about our community is the sense of, of, um, history and belonging that we have. And the fact that we have this, this event that's been going on for a great number of years, um, is, is, is a testament to the community and to all the work that Mr. Bailey does. It's, it's always nice around September, we start seeing them come in. Um, you know, it's, you know, it's spooky season. You know, it's starting to get ready for it. So, uh, huge appreciation to that. Um, on a similar note, um, as, uh, Mr. Blevins noted, and, um, we've been talking about a dog, dog park as, as long as I've been sitting up here. Uh, and it's, it's, I've, I'm very much appreciative of the Smiths who have taken on the, that initiative as citizens to kind of drive this forward, um, to actually seeing things done. And it's, it's exciting. And I think that Wayne actually mentioned it, it's not just for our dogs, it's for, it's for our people. Um, because peop- like, because that is, that is one of those, um, it's, it's one of those social infrastructures. And I think about it, like, with my, my child going to the, the child park, is I get an opportunity to talk to other parents and, you know, we, we see like what the thing, phase they're going through. It's the same thing with dog parks. You go and you meet the other dog owners. You talk to people. And I think that, and, and again, it, it's the same thing for the, the, the trick-or-treat. It, it's one of my favorite, it's one of my favorite things because I think that you can look at a lot of other communities. When, when it's Halloween, people get out of their houses. They're having fires out front. They're talking to their neighbors. And considering the climate that we are in a nation where there seems- and considering the climate that we are in a nation, where there seems like there's so much anger and frustration and, and hate, it's when you're out talking to your neighbor, there's none of that, but it's just the person that's next to you, so I think that these are the things that that make this a great place to live, I think that these are the things that make this, um, a, a, a better country. On this note too, um, I do want to give, uh, an appreciation to Joe. There's a, we've talked about it before, in, uh, Henry the Fourth Shakespeare's play, his famous line, first we'll do is we'll kill all the lawyers. And we've, and we've joked about this, um, and it's a famous line that gets thrown around, the context of it is, is it's these people that are trying to overthrow the government. They're trying to bring about anarchy and chaos, and, and lawyers are kind of seen as like the barrier for that. And, um, and that's kind of Shakespeare's tongue in cheek there. A lot of times, uh, Joe has the, has the unfortunate role of telling us things that we don't necessarily want to hear, and that is a difficult thing to do. And I am very, very much appreciative of having his guidance and being able to do those hard things. It is, it is so crucial, because everything that we do here is surrounded by the law. It's this, like, when we read those ordinances three times, it becomes a part of, it becomes real. And if we don't have the law, then we don't have anything. And so I know it is frustrating, um, we, we all think that this is a worthy event, but it's just so crucial that we, we keep that forefront of our mind, and so thank you very much, Joe. And, uh, lastly, to Ms. Nowalski, um, thank, thank you so much for the work that you do for the children of our, of our state. It's having you up here, uh, brought tears to my eyes, um, you know, uh, I know that all the parents up here feel the same way, having a parent changed the way that you perceive the world, and and that, that, um, it's heartbreaking that we have children that are going through that, and, um, very much appreciative of having good people like you that are doing this work, um, for your own children, but for all children. Um, and I, as a teacher, I'm sure Mr. Valerius could attest to this, I've had many students that have come from split homes, and there is one week they're good, and then the next week they're not good. And it's, it's a sad, sad reality, and so, um, this is good work that you do, and I'm sure that it's, it's frustrating, because as we've talked about, government moves slow a lot of times, but, um, I, I very much wish you, um, the best of luck, because it's, it's absolutely, um, it's absolutely crucial. It's the most important thing to secure in our future. And, and the last thing I s- will say at the end of a long meeting, just because, um, this may not pertain particularly to this office, but as Mr. Schleck, uh, mentioned here, um, we've had a trying week at Allen Park High School. Um, the school was closed down Wednesday because there was a threat, um, that was addressed. And then on Friday, we had a malfunction of our boot system, where we had to lock down, I will tell you. Um, and, and I, I'm sure this, Mr. Estrimer's got two kids that are, they're going to Allen Park High School, I'm sure there was a conversation around the dinner table. Those, those seven minutes that we were in lockdown on that first one on Friday, there was people in that room that were, that were thinking the worst. And as an educator, as a parent, it deeply saddens me that we have to go through this situation where we make our children prepare for someone to enter these buildings to do them harm. It breaks my heart. It breaks my heart that that seems to be the only solution that we have as a society. I'm sitting here, and there's nothing that this city council can do, but I know that there's things that we can do as a society to make this better, so that I don't need to send my kid to school in three years and have him go hide in the corner to prepare for someone to enter into that building with a gun to shoot him. Breaks my heart. It is so frustrating that we have no other answer to it. And I am so appreciative of those kids, I was having a writer's conference with somebody when it happened, and, and honestly, it's, I'm proud of them, but it also breaks my heart that lockdown drill went off, he stood up, took the boot on, put it in, and the kids did exactly what they're supposed to, because they've been training to do it since they were five years old. And I'm not sitting up here telling anybody to do anything or to take anything actions, I just have a microphone, and I'm sad, and I'm frustrated, so you all get to hear about it. And, uh, I, I know that we can be better. I know that we have the ability to do better as a country, and I hope that we do.
Thank you, Dan. Mr. Wirtzbocker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, uh, and thought about what Dan said about sending a child to school and having to be concerned about their safety. I didn't have to go any, do like that, anything in my life, or thank heavens to my son or daughter, but I do have a ten-year-old grandson. And unfortunately, I think about that way too often. Everybody have a safe Halloween. And with that, I yield.
Ms. Nick.
Well, I can sympathize with both of you. I do special events, I've been trained by the Dearborn Police on how to handle, um, people who come in. I work at Henry Ford College, I am the first one there, if somebody comes in, we've had incidences, and I am the first one they see. So I'm the one that has to close the door and put every, make sure everybody's protected, so I totally understand what, what both of you are talking about, and how scary it can be. But on a lighter note, um, Ram's Horn on Southfield now, um, if nobody knows, they're open twenty-four hours on the weekends now. They've been open for about a month for, um, for twenty-four hours, which I didn't know until the other day. So I do want to say thank you to all the fire departments that went out to Southgate and handled that, um, the senior housing in Southgate, and from the pictures I saw, and the videos I saw, uh, it's remarkable that nobody got injured, or nobody got killed from what, from what I saw. And then our, our firefighters came back, um, out safely, so thank you for everybody who went and fought that fire. As far as Mark Bailey, I've been working with you for twenty years, I will be there again on Halloween to help you with the handicapped kids and the party and the pumpkins and everything else, and Ray McGuson, thank you for stepping up and giving him some money, I know it's been hard, Mark, this year, because several of the businesses that helped you, Moss checks, uh, J and S, um, Agamese, you know, they've all had different owners, and so they weren't able to help you this year. So thank you, Ray, for stepping in and helping, if anybody else can help out there, you know, please go see Mark at the shoe store, it's a very worthy cause. And I appreciate everything you've done for thirty-seven years, um, so, and I will continue to help you. And that's it, I hope everybody has a safe and, um, Halloween, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Valerius.
All right, I know it's been a long meeting, but I'm going to talk a little bit longer than I normally talk, but I'm kind of just focusing on the past, uh, week's events, and, uh, you know, I had a a moment at school today where I was kind of perusing, uh, the internet and reading some news articles and and, and everything else in the short break that I had in between classes, and, uh, sat down and started typing, so I'm just going to read to you kind of what I put together here. So on October third of twenty twenty-three, a large number of fire departments responded to a large building fire at the Meadows of Southgate, senior apartment community on Allen Road near Pennsylvania. Uh, fire departments from Ecorse, Brownstown, uh, Taylor, Windout, Allen Park, Trenton, and Southgate battled that blaze for over three hours. And amazingly, uh, there were no fi- fatalities, thanks to the brave wo- women and men of these fire departments and all the first responders. Tragically ironic, this past Friday, October twenty-fourth, at approximately ten oh six, the fire that other council members have mentioned, was reported at the American House Senior Living Community on Allen Road in Southgate. Same road, same city. Fire departments from all downriver communities, even including Detroit, responded and were on the scene. Amazingly, there were no fatalities. I pulled a quote from one of the articles I read from Southgate Fire Chief Justin Graves, when interviewed about the response, and the fact that there were very few injuries, considering these were senior housing, uh, you know, buildings. He said that he was completely thankful, and even described it as a miracle. I think we often take for granted our first responders, our firefighters, paramedics, and police officers. Uh, we sometimes view them in a negative light, simply based on media news reports that focus on only the bad and negative. After all, that's what social media thrives on, the bad, the negative. It feeds negativity, and unfortunately, a lot of people thrive on it, and that's why they're on there constantly posting, and probably ninety-plus percent of it is negative, all of it. Although these two incidents are sad, and we all hope and pray for those affected by these events, especially the seniors who are, you know, uh, lost their homes, basically, there are some positives. Our brave firefighters in Allen Park worked together with neighboring departments to rescue and save lives. Both of these incidents could have very well been extremely tragic. Hundreds of injuries and deaths could have occurred. And I'm sure if that had happened, social media would be eating it up, because they focus on the negative. We need to remember that these firefighters and first responders can face events like these past two every single day. Even worse. This is their job. This is what they do. We are facing a crisis, not only here in Michigan, but across the nation. Fewer and fewer people are making the decision to become firefighters, paramedics, and police officers. You know, congratulate Officer Kevin Locklear on his retirement, well earned after twenty-five years, but again, we're losing another police officer to retirement. A lot of that stems from the concentrated negative portrayal received from the media based on the one percent of people in these jobs who do something stupid, and thus the other ninety-nine percent are categorized in the, in the same negative way. My guess is that the seniors who called the Meadows of Southgate and American House Senior Living Community home, all of their families and friends, the staff, and all the children and families of all the firefighters and first responders who wake up every day, ready and willing to sacrifice their lives to save someone else's, are truly thankful that they chose to do what they do every day. I know I am, with that I yield.
Thank you, Matthew. Mr. Barr.
Well, of the eight things that I had originally written, everything pretty much has been said. I was, when the fire occurred, I was probably about twenty-five to twenty-seven hundred miles away from here, and yes, I heard about it, uh, about the fire. I've also seen some of the footage from the Windout Police Department of them breaking down doors to get people, residents out. I commend them, as is every single first responder. Mr. Schleck, you took my last one. Today is National Res- uh, First Responder Day, so, thank you. On a different note, just want to remind everybody to lock your vehicle when you get done driving it, uh, at night, um, and turn on those porch lights. Lately, in the area, there have been some, oh, what's the, what's the terminology, chief? Unauthorized entry of automobiles, uh, it's, it's happening not just here, but everywhere. Thank you to everybody that came up, and I yield.
Thank you, Gerald. I'll start out with something, uh, you missed one here, apparently today is National Chocolate Day.
Whoa, I didn't see that one.
Ah. So, uh, as long as it's dark chocolate, we're good. Uh, and, and I think also ironically, with everything that's been going on, that this should also be First Responders Day, is, is kind of ironic. I was talking to Mayor Cospa, who, who commented recently, when I saw him, that it was almost a year to the day that this occurred. He also indicated, uh, you know, some of the first responders are, are police, and they do go in where sometimes I know fire would prefer they didn't, but they, they have to, and I know that Mayor Cospa indicated that his sister, uh, lived in the American House, and she was on the third floor, and she's an invalid, so someone had to bring her down from the third floor, and for that, he is eternally grateful. Uh, for those who are interested, um, in just checking around, the, it appears as though the Allen Park Presbyterian Church, I think, is uh, accepting gift cards, you would have to contact them to see for what, if you go to the Southgate, um, website on their main page, uh, they have a list of, um, clothing and other items that they are collecting. They also have a, a section that is set up for donations, but I have not been able to access that yet, and I've contacted them on that. Along with Halloween, yes, please be careful, and we pray that people drive carefully, and would like to reinforce to people, when you're particularly in a school zone, if you could just possibly pay attention to stop signs, that would be a really great thing to do. Uh, also, um, if you're going to drink and drive, please let somebody else drive you home, or take a Uber. Really getting tired of reading stories about driving the wrong way on freeways and, uh, causing accidents and sometimes death. Along with Halloween, we get, uh, something else this weekend, and Sunday is daylight savings time. So we get to fall back, and it just gets even darker when we get up, so. There was something I, I failed to mention, I had it on my notes, um, just a kind of a philosophy, but, um, I, I volunteered at Media in Michigan a couple of weeks ago, and I had wanted to mention that on Saturday, I'd worked there all day with the group, and at the end of the day, there'd been a mother and son that, that had worked there and volunteered. And when we were all wrapping up and everything was done, uh, one of the best and highest compliments that I received at the end of that evening was that, uh, the mom came up and looked at me and said, "I didn't know you were the mayor." And I told her, "That's a good thing. That's a good thing." Because from my viewpoint, I prefer not to be that recognized, because that lets me know how employees and other people who service our residents treat our residents. I don't want you to know who I am, I don't want you to treat me any differently. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Wirtzbocker. Second by Mr. Barr. And everybody else, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned at seven thirty-two, have a safe weekend, let's hope we have great weather.